Good evening, everyone. It's always such a pleasure walking into this building. So, welcome. I want to remind everyone, I need to practice speaking loudly. Remember, we don't have microphones. So, everyone needs to speak up in order to be picked up by our recording instruments. For the good of the organization. I know we have at least one. Alice?
So, I went to the HQ CCP meeting last week at the Department of Education, and they are working on the Perkins Five report. So, the interesting thing about that this year is there's a new section required by Perkins as a community. It has a name. No, it was long name. Hang on. I brought it up. It's CLNA, Community Local Comprehensive Local Needs Settlement. And they're working on a kind of a form that was more of an essay demand from all the districts that received Chapter 74 money. It is under development. So, even though they're submitting the Perkins Five report, they're going to still take edits to that, which is a good thing because it's a very, very comprehensive law. And so, I'm going to ask if you fully implemented this and fully implemented that. It's very difficult to answer. So, that's coming. Their Chapter 74 grants are going to the Board of Education in a November meeting, Accept Admissions, which is being held into the spring. So, there you go. That's it.
Thank you. I know that you always have Minuteman in mind to at these meetings. Anything else for the good of the organization? Oh, and did I say that the superintendent isn't with us tonight because he is at a Lincoln Planning Board meeting? He is just leaving to me as we speak.
You're wearing rather cute.
Yes.
We're swearing from the field that we know that's not going to happen. Just keep your ears open.
Yes. Welcome Amy to the table. Before we go on into the rest of the Chair's Report and the School Committee Goals and the subcommittee assignments, I believe we do want to take one item out of order.
Sure. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to, under Director of Finances' Report A, Authorization to Issue a $5 Million Bond Anticipation Note. We have Lynn Foster, who's the Vice President and Senior Financial Advisor for Unibank by Fiscal Advisor Services here tonight, and Kevin Mahoney's here also as well to support us in this conversation. She'll explain the current strategy that they worked on together as far as borrowing with bands now and then borrowing long-term later. But she's much more articulate at that than I would be, so I'll turn it over to Lynn.
Hi. How are you doing? It's been a while. This place is fantastic. Since 2002, my file goes back, it's finally here. And we're also getting through the last, as you know, the last of our financing pieces. Obviously, we're a year ahead and we're under budget. We had initially some of the planning for this $5 Million note and why it's a note and why it's so short-term is there was some discussion about financing the district's total share now before the end of the calendar year with the thought of capturing the market as it is, as it's been for a little while now. With that, what Kevin and I discussed, if we issued a bond, you know, before the end of this calendar year, normally you would have a semi-annual interest payment, okay? So, that would have given you, if we issued in December, the district would have had an interest payment on those bonds, say, in June, okay? Still in the fiscal year that we're currently in, really nothing is budgeted for that payment. Then we said, "Well, we could go out in December still. The IRS allows you to extend your interest payment instead of the semi-annual one. We could bump that as an annual interest and push it into '21." Well, that becomes now, then we jump from a budget consideration to an assessment consideration. And we agreed, that came to consensus, is that let's just get into next calendar year, okay? And chances are, the market is not going to move away from us. There's so many variables out there that people are running out of the equities and going into fixed income. Of course, that changes overnight depending what's tweeted. So, we didn't think, then it was, okay, we've got budget risk, we can solve that, we've got assessment risk, we can get around that, and the lesser of those is market risk. So, we decided to do the bump risk, give you the cash flow you need into February, we'll issue a bond for the district share of the construction cost end of January. It's a market typically is an attractive market in January, February. And then you'll know, you'll have your debt service in hand. Most of your project costs will be now permanently financed and well under, back in the day when we first came in here and started doing projections A, B, C, and D. So, the district has done very, very well in the market. And of course, we've been using those pools to pay project costs. So, that, those are funds that you don't have to borrow. That's where we are. The documents say they're just being certified by the Department of Revenue. I know you're used to sometimes taking a vote to accept the bids. Since that is being done through the Department of Revenue, we do not need a vote from the Board to accept the bid.
Any questions?
Just a couple of questions. Thank you, Lynn, first of all. Second, if we were to have gone out, tried to issue now, can you give a sense as to what you think a 30-year rate for Minuteman would be?
A 30-year rate? You would be under 3%.
Okay.
And that's a level that on the 30.
Right. And that we're still at AA plus?
Double A plus.
In January, are we going to have to get a new?
Yep. Yep. They'll have to rate the issue.
Yep. But there's nothing, nothing, there's nothing that would stop the calendar for us from being out in, I mean, having this done in January or February.
There is, there is nothing that would prohibit us from going out. Now, this note will be coming due, so it's either you'd need to roll over $5 Million or permanently finance it. So, there's nothing that I can see that, I mean, the building's here. I mean, you know, if you were to ask me that question and you were, you know, there was an issue with construction, then, you know, maybe I'd give a little pause, you know, and not be 100%. But yeah, we'll be going out in January.
Okay, great.
And that'll give the district then enough time to communicate the additional assessments to the member towns.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, Dr. Dryden provided a memo with the results of the note sale. It should be noted that we're issuing three bond anticipation notes, one to Unibank for Savings at a 1.85% coupon rate, also Century Bank, $1 Million at the same coupon rate in Oppenheimer. They did the whole amount, but we awarded $3 Million at a net interest rate of 2.186 because they paid a premium at the time, won't pay a premium at the time of the settlement. So, it's about $23,000 that we will need to provide for our initial budget because, as Lynn mentioned, the thinking was we were going to be doing some additional borrowing as we carry into fiscal '21. But given the cash flow needs and the assessment impacts Lynn just articulated, the short-term borrowing was required. So, you'll have that panel in the packet. And as Lynn mentioned, we'll be back in the market in January to do another piece of permanent financing for the project.
Yeah, that'll be the last large piece, as you know, with 75%. So, it's not for if you done. And the next piece is really waiting for the final audit from MSBA. So, we dot the i's across the t's because the last thing you want to do is all to borrow.
Other questions for Lynn or Kevin?
So, Kevin, I know we don't have to vote, but did you want to have the vote or no? I know we put it down just to authorize the administration to issue the $5 Million bond anticipation notes?
It's a pleasure. The committee must be on the record, or if they just want to accept the report, accept the bid is presented without a vote. It's certainly discretion of the committee, but a vote is not required for the purposes of filing the notes with the Bureau of Accounts.
So, I move that the committee endorse the recommendation to issue $5 Million in bond anticipation notes due January 2020.
Certainly. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Lynn, thank you. Kevin?
I didn't recognize you.
You didn't?
No, I've been away too long.
Oh, I didn't recognize you because Chris Concord, not us.
Okay, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Okay, moving back into the agenda, the next item is reviewing and approving our school committee goals. And on the third or fourth page of the packet, you will find the school committee goals. What we did was we asked each subcommittee to submit a goal for the committee to consider. So, do I have a motion to approve the goals?
Yep.
So, move.
Second? Okay. Any discussion on our goals? People need a moment to look at the goals. Take a moment to look at them.
Wasn't there a revised version that was emailed to us?
The second copy included the strategic planning.
Was that sent as on?
That was in the second email.
Oh, in email, but not hard copy?
Not hard copy, so.
Right. For those who didn't have it, the strategic planning task force's goal is to, you know, fairly simple goal, not simple in terms of the work, but a sentence, to develop a process for leadership succession. So, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstaining? Pass unanimously? Moving on, the next page, I believe, are subcommittee assignments. Do we have a motion to approve the subcommittee assignments?
So, move. Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
Building Committee is not on here as a subcommittee.
Well, that's oversight.
I would suggest that it should be because it'll be in force at least for another year or two.
Yes. Okay, someone has to help me now.
Just a question as to whether that's separately authorized. And wouldn't the Building Committee exist even if we didn't have this motion?
Yeah, it's going to exist anyway. It has to exist, but I would think it should be part of the, part of the roster.
Essentially, a friendly amendment. Friendly amendment to amend the motion to add the Building Committee with its current membership. And I so move it.
Second.
Okay. With the listing as amended, any further discussion?
Don't we have to approve the amendment first?
Oh, do we approve?
Yeah, we have to approve the amendment first.
Okay.
Well, not the friendly amendment, they can just accept it anyway.
Okay. Thank you for putting up with my complete lack of knowledge of rules of law, it's rules of order. Okay, so, right now, we're either discussing the, or voting on the amendment to include the Building Committee. So, any further discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Pass unanimously? Going back to the motion for the school committee's subcommittees. Is there any further discussion on the subcommittee assignments? All in favor? All opposed? Abstaining? Pass unanimously? Thank you. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report. Okay, the first one is to approve the superintendent's trip to the Athletic Business Show in Orlando. Is there someone here who can speak to that?
I can explain it. I can speak to it, actually. For conflict of interest laws, there are times when your administration would be given an opportunity to go to a conference and for them to pay for the transportation and so forth. And while he's there, he does plan on looking into vendors who could help us with the fields and the operations of our, of our school district. So, to avoid conflict of interest, as long as you have the school committee address it publicly that you agree that he should go there and investigate this and it's in the best interest of the district, then it's not a conflict of interest. Therefore, I know he would recommend, and I'm recommending on his back behalf, that you vote to approve his, Dr. Cohen's trip to the Athletic Business Show in Orlando, Florida on November 12 through 16, 2019.
Do you know anything about it?
I do. It's a, oh, would you like to speak? It's a very large business show, you know, like in one of those big conference areas where there are going to be literally hundreds of vendors, but certainly many vendors that would be appropriate for us to possibly learn more about how we can improve our operations.
Also, as networking, we might find appropriate people to work with at the same time. If I may, this is the exact same kind of conference that he went to when he went to Germany.
Right.
So, it's the exact same type of thing that's very beneficial for him to go to. So, I would highly recommend it.
Okay, so, some other things over here. Alice?
I still don't understand why there's a conflict of interest.
Because they, they're paying for him to go out and actually speak. I believe he's even speaking at this event. But they're paying for him to attend, they're paying his travel, they're paying his hotel. That's what a conflict of interest would be because it's more than $50.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, I will move that we approve of Dr. Cohen's trip to the Athletic Business Show in Orlando. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Pass unanimously? Okay. The next item is the superintendent, Leadership Goals and Education Annual Plan, which we did discuss at the last meeting. It is included in your packet. Do I have, well, first of all, I guess I, well, actually, do we, do I have a motion to approve?
So, move. Second. Oh, that's how we get through the agenda, right?
This is like, this is going to be one of the fastest.
And no, no for the edits were, or suggestions were made.
Okay, that was my question. Were there any changes?
There were not.
There's some typos.
There were some grammar.
So, I did have one question on the timeline for Goal 7. It says June of 2019 and March of 2019. Is that supposed to be 2020? It seems to me that that was left. So, Goal 7, the timeline has June of 2019 and March of 2019, which would be 2020.
20.
2020.
Thank you.
Okay. Good catch.
Yep.
Jim?
Yes, I didn't want to make any amendments or suggestions, but I did want to have conversations about two goals. The first is just the Goal 3, which is the increasing the applications and sustainable enrollment. And Part A has a number of 160 current member town applicants, which I think is the right number. And I guess the question for discussion is, if Belmont were to leave, would you want to at least have a conversation about what the appropriate number is? Would it be like 150 or 148? And I actually sort of bring that up because it would be useful for me to sort of have in my mind what your expectations are from the nine-member schools about what appropriate level is. And, but I don't want to go into it, but I just sort of note that it reads like it's with Belmont.
So, Jeff, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I'd comment would be, at this time, there's so many variables in this. That's just one more.
Okay.
One of the variables is what, and I was going to discuss this during the task force report, was what is full enrollment at this school mean? And that's still an open question. What full enrollment means? What is the number, appropriate number of students that we can house in this school successfully? So, this is a draft goal for him, and over time, we may have to change the number.
Okay.
But at this time, the best available information is that that is the number that he feels comfortable with putting here as a goal. And we move forward with it. And as we get more used to the building, then we will have a better idea of what the number really should be, what it means for the school to be full.
Yeah, and I feel like it's premature at this point, but you know, we're being total speculation.
I thought, I thought that he would be here to have that conversation.
And then the other goal, Goal 4, and I just sort of note for us, and I wish you were here, is that, you know, I'm, I mean, I'm fully to support of this goal as written, and I, but I just want us to understand this needs to be a collaborative process with the superintendent, that it's, you know, we're not sending him off on his own to set, you know, to set a legislative agenda or sort of make policy if it's, if it's policy matters, that need, that needs some conversations here. And I just offer that in sort of a friendly sense to make sure that we understand that Goal 4 involves us as much as the superintendent.
Yeah, I think that that's a good point. And I think in reading this, you know, I think that, you know, I'm glad that you pointed it out because I think it's assumed, but it's good to state it. Other, other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstaining? Pass unanimously? Skills Capital Grant, Bob, are you?
I can speak to that. And the documents you might want to look at start, there's, I think, three or four pages. They start looking like this in your packets. So, I worked with Michelle Roach and Dr. Bee and many other people on this capital skills grant, which is a pretty exciting opportunity. In the box at the top, it gives you a very simplistic definition of what we're doing, what we're striving to do with this grant, and that this equipment will create an automated supply chain logistics management center in the warehouse for our visual for people. And it'll be an expansion of the robotics and automation program and integrated into engineering and advanced manufacturing. This will be utilized by partnering colleges and mid-century students and staff. So, to help flesh that out for you, a lot of this equipment here, well, first of all, the grant's a wonderful grant in that the Department of Ed will match $3 for every $1 that we put in. So, one of the things that you had done in preparation, knowing that your building was heck going to have capital needs and you want to improve your programs, was that you put aside capital stabilization funds. There's still close to $700,000, a little less than $700,000 in your capital stabilization fund. Therefore, what we had written in the grant was that we would take $500,000 of that capital stabilization fund, and they would then in turn give us $1.5 Million. In addition, some of the partners that we developed with the companies that we would be ordering these have also donated $100,000. One is Fesco, and they donated $88,000 worth of equipment in addition to us purchasing this equipment. And the other company is?
Able Womack.
Yes, Able Womack. And I believe they're donating $100,000. So, this grant has huge, a huge opportunity for us to drastically improve our programming. We're very excited about it. And these are the details of what we would be ordering and how we would implement it. If you have any other questions?
I have a, do a question.
Sure.
So, is this a grant that we're hoping to get?
It is a grant that we're hoping to get. The good news is the turnaround time is very quick on this grant, and we expect to know by the 24th.
Of November?
Yes.
So, this is still speculation?
It is.
And this is a grant from the state, is that right?
The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Okay, let me also, was this in the original packet?
Yeah.
So, no, this was in the second email.
Okay, so, the second email, we should have those things at our desk because we can't always print them out in the meantime if they weren't here. So, I'm kind of going back and forth, seeing what I have and what I don't have, besides the chance.
We lost power on Friday, and we needed to shut everything down. The packet was done very quickly in order to get, and not everything at that time was ready.
Why did we lose power? Is that something in the infrastructure?
The store.
Oh, yeah, we, actually, was Mill Street was down.
Okay, so, not our building?
No, no, what happened was that National Grid, National Grid recommended that we shut down while they worked on the power on Mill Street so that it didn't affect our building. So, it was a voluntary shutdown of electricity, but we were all, Julie and I were rushing our emails at the last minute. We were all working on getting stuff done before.
Okay, that's, I understand, but you could then have said, "We will not have a chance to print this out for you to have at your station."
Yes.
And then I would have made a bigger effort to do so. So, this is a grant that we might get, and they will match us, how many dollars for every?
$3 for every dollar.
Up to how much money?
Up to, I believe that we maxed out at $1.5 Million is supposed to be.
Put it in for $1.
That they would give us the $1.5.
We put in how much?
$500,000.
We put up 500, and they?
Put up $1.5 Million, and that was the max.
Okay, and we will know about that in a week.
We're hoping.
But we'll know one way or the other.
Yes, as long as they're on schedule. The Department of Ed isn't always on schedule, but they, they did really want this to happen. By the way, the other thing I didn't share with you was, and you don't have the paperwork, but it's actually a two-year grant, and we were one of the few, we were the only district that applied for two years' worth of funding and put it, so I think we have a very comprehensive plan, and I'm, you know, cautiously optimistic.
It's paid over two years.
Paid over two years. But it shows planning, forethought. It was really well done by Dr. Cohen and the team.
Can you send that out again because it did not seem to come through on my.
I don't have it on my.
So, it was sent on Monday, if that helps you, if you're looking under the right date.
It's not as ordered, I don't have it.
Yesterday is. I don't have it. I have a whole bunch on that one.
Do you want this one for now?
I was curious about what equipment was being.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't get it either.
So, there's like five things included. This was not one of them.
So, can we send out this material?
Sure.
This was for informational purposes and, yes, Alice.
So, just so I understand, the two, it's over two years, so it's $500,000 from stabilization over two years, it's $1.5 Million over two years. All of those things are over two years.
Correct.
Oh, okay, so not $500,000 each year?
No.
No. That's total.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And just, just, just to repeat, it's, it's not 500 from us in the first year, but it's 250 in each year for, I think, for budget. I just got it there. And it doesn't matter if it comes.
Actually, it doesn't really matter, and I know we put aside the money.
It would be part of a budget.
Yeah, we did put aside part, we used, we put aside the money to invest in such things, so it's, you have this wonderful opportunity. Let's cross our fingers.
Well, it does matter if something happens that is unanticipated. So, I mean, it's nice to know that it is split.
And, but the point that I'm making is that we can just build it into the budget without necessarily taking away from the stabilization.
Other questions for Bob on this topic? So, you don't need any action from the school?
It was informational, yeah.
Great.
Okay. Okay, great. So, next on the agenda is our Belmont update. So, I believe that, you know, we discussed this at our last, last meeting. Belmont, you know, has scheduled a, a vote on, or has scheduled rescinding their withdrawal from the district. And I think that, you know, Jim is just, you know, as last time, looking for a sense of the school committee, you know, that he can go back to Belmont with. So, what the, you know, protocol is, they vote, and then it comes to the school committee. So, it's like not appropriate for us to take any vote before Belmont has taken a vote because, you know, that's sort of the protocol in the regional agreement, they vote, we vote. But I think that we can have a discussion. But I think that we can have a discussion to be able to give Jim a sense of release.
Would you like my quick comments on what's happened since our last meeting?
Sure.
So...
Absolutely.
As Pam said, the special town meeting is, is going to start on Wednesday, November 14th. The moderator has talked with me about if, if everything works out well, we will, we will hopefully have the, we will, we will have a debate on the first night. The town meeting members get a package of materials that are sent out then tomorrow. They'll be getting a 22-page report from, from me, which I'll be glad to send to, glad to, glad to send over to Julia, if she wants to, to, to pass on to all of you. There will also be something from the warrant committee. Last week, the school committee in Belmont voted 5-0 to support the motion to rescind the notice of withdrawal, that is, that is, maybe some stay in there, and the superintendent is fully supportive of it. The next three bodies to vote for the town meeting on Thursday morning, it's gonna be the capital ledger on committee. At some point, maybe next week, would be the warrant committee, and then the, and then the three members of the select board will vote at some point. Those three member, you know, one of them serves on the capital budget, and the other serves on the warrant, I think, for that sense of that. The warrant committee's gonna be, you know, a toss-up or mixed, as far, as far as I can tell. But, right now, you know, there are, there are few, there, there is really only one person who's clearly identified in, in opposition to it, and I think, I think everyone else is just waiting to see how it goes. That we're trying to get, you know, I'm trying to get the select board and the town administrator comfortable with the idea that the $472,000 makeup capital fee could be, could be, could be paid through the town, town budget next, next year. And I'm setting the expectation based on our conversations here, is that if, if Belmont chooses to stay in, they should expect an additional assessment next year of 472,667 dollars. I have, I have also said that no one has raised a voice in opposition here that I've heard yet. And if, and if you're planning on doing so, please do it sooner rather than later, you save me time. The, you know, what's, what's really driving this, and, and, I mean, a couple things is the work of the building law committee on getting the building done a year in advance, on time, on, on budget. That's, that really is a remarkable achievement, and the other is the work of the enrollment and George, and ha, you know, being able to say, there's a waitlist for ninth, ninth, ninth grade, is, is, is really powerful. And so, it lets us sort of say, the situation has changed, you know? You, three years ago, you might've thought the safer path for Belmont was to start this exit process because of all the uncertainties. Well, we've learned a lot in three years, and now, I'm making the case that the safer path for Belmont is, is to stay in. And that's, and that's sort of the messaging going on there. And then the other thing that I'm saying, sort of on your behalf, is that, to Belmont, this is, this is really the last best chance they have to stay in. If they don't go through this process of a town meeting to rescind the notice of withdrawal, and to ask for the unanimous support here, if in some future day, they say, gee, it'd be nice to be a member of Minuteman, you know, it's a much more complicated process. So, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to sort of stress that, you know, they shouldn't think, well, we can pass here, and then we'll come back and ask you to amend the regional agreement, and go to all your town, town meetings to have that. So, so we'll see how it goes. So, so, I mean, thanks for all, for all the support and encouragement, and for all the work that was done over the many, many years that has brought us to this point.
Well, thank you for shepherding this forward. It seems at this point, you know, that we will hope for a positive outcome for Belmont.
And, and if, and if, and if it does happen, we have a, we have a meeting the following Tuesday. And I would hope that the town clerk could get the notice of rescission here, and that we could, we could take a vote at the, at the November meeting. It's certainly my hope.
Jim, I'm just curious, who or, who or what group in, in Belmont will offer the motion of...
That's, that's a, that's a good, that, I, the expectation, I mean, I think the moderator has asked the chair of the school committee to offer the motion. School, the chair of the school committee has asked me to. But I think it's, I think it's better coming from the school committee, 'cause it's an issue about the education of...
They really should be coming from...
Yeah.
It's the right thing for the kids.
Yeah, and the other thing is that, I mean, I, I, I haven't talked to the moderator, but I would, I would, I mean, I certainly wanna talk to you, Pam, and Ed about whether, whether you feel comfortable, and whether the moderator feels comfortable for you to be present at the meeting. Not to make a presentation, but if there were questions, and just a sign that you're, you were there, I think that would be good. Similarly, George, you know, I, the, on November 5th, there's a, an informational night that's co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters and the warrant committee. And since the warrant committee was asking a lot of questions about enrollment, I said, you know, you know, George is, George is the direct source there. I'm not sure if they're going to reach out to you, and instead, they may, I mean, they, they've sort of asked me to be in touch with, with you on that, but we should have that, I mean, I, we should have a follow-up, follow-up conversation. Particularly if, you know, I, you know, there, there, people are trying to figure out whether this ninth grade class is a, is a one-time fluke, or whether it's, it is a new, you know, a new watermark that we're gonna see going, you know, going forward. And I'm certainly making the case that I, that I believe that it's, that it's the new, new and normal, but whatever's going on there. So... Jim, has there been any more discussion, questions about splitting up that 472,000? You know, I mean, I mean, I mean, they, that they keep asking, but my sense is, it would, I mean, this, this, we as a body are not ready to sort of make a commitment to it, so, so I'm just telling them not to count on that. And if come budget time, it really were an issue, you know, they can talk to towns on a case-by-case basis. But I, 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 I think we're gonna resolve that within, within the week in, in that side Belmont.
Just a comment, Jim. In the case that issue does come up, it may not hurt to remind them that effectively, if they do rejoin us, the other communities have been financing them for three years, so we already have that expense.
Yeah, exactly. So, I, I, that, that, I'm, 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 I really don't, I mean, I, the only reason I've been talking to you about that is that I've been asked to bring that to this, to this table. But I, I, I frankly think that we'll, we'll find a resolution.
Is there anything else you need from us? Are you satisfied with our non-objection?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, right.
Okay.
I just, I just wanted to say, it's, you have been the honest broker we really needed at this point, and I really, I very appreciate all you've done for the committee and for Minuteman, these are the Belmont, I agree that...
And are you willing to keep serving if they do, do rejoin?
Well, my term, my term is up in June, but, yeah, sure. I mean, yeah, yeah, I, no, no, as I say, as I say, you know, as I say in my report that I've enjoyed, enjoyed, enjoyed working, that, that my time on the school and community has been a positive experience, I've enjoyed working, working with you all.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, thank you.
Let's move on to principal's report, George.
Guess in the packet you got some NCAS data. Everybody have this included?
That came from my email.
Okay. Just checking.
Yep.
I have it on my phone.
And it's hard to read. I couldn't turn my computer sideways.
It's not NCAS. Can you hold it up again, George?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Just like this.
These things. I can throw a PowerPoint up if you wanna do that.
Sure.
Yeah, that would be helpful, thanks.
George, do you need this? Does this work?
I have no idea what I need. Let's just see what we got.
I wanna watch you do it, so I can figure out how to do it.
Do we, while he's figuring that out, do we wanna do some of these field trips and stuff that easily take...
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Good point. Thank you, Jennifer, keeping us moving. Okay, moving down, there is a field trip to the National Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
I assume this is the same trip that we take every year, is that correct?
Yes.
With the same precautions and protection.
All of the policies the school committee will follow, and affect the classes, and so...
Thank you. Yes. All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Pass unanimously? Have a motion on the field trip to the Museum of Modern Art?
It's all about the education.
Second.
Any discussion? Same thing, all policies.
And if they go every year, and...
Yes. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, pass unanimously. This next one is a new field trip. Let's see, I don't, I don't see, George, it's busy. Amy, can you talk to it, or should we wait?
No, she's...
Which one was that?
The Revision Energy Facility Open House.
Yeah, we'll come back to that.
Okay.
We just gotta talk about revolving funds, and the, kind of, that I said before.
Yes, is there, Bob, can we...
Sure, absolutely, take it out of order. So, as required by law regarding revolving funds, in your packet you have a listing of all the revolving funds. It looks like this. With projected receipts and expenses, this is required information for us to present in our budget book, so that's why we always bring it forward for your approval. You'll note that some of the projected expenses are greater than the projected receipts. This is a result of not having revenue opportunities and having increased expenses due to the transition year between the old and the new buildings. So, you know, for example, we're not renting out the building at this point, you know, so that's a lot of time that normally we would be renting out for, you know, activities and events, where we would be getting some rental income. The school's subcommittee, school finance subcommittee reviewed this document, as well as some related unaudited data from the prior year at their September meeting. They approved forwarding this agenda item to the full committee for your approval. So, tonight, I would ask you to vote to approve that this be a 20 revolving fund as presented.
So...
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Questions? Yes?
So, these unhappy numbers?
Yep.
We believe to be just one year. And that the next year, we expect them to be back to what we would consider normal, is that correct?
Absolutely correct. And that's why I shared with the finance subcommittee some other data that showed more historical data, and the fact that we actually do have a very large balance, total fund balance, so that we can weather the storm this year.
And under projected expenses under rental, what are the projected expenses under rental of 190,000 dollars? What's that rental general, under facilities rental? Why do we have 190,000 dollars expenses there?
Jim, can you? Yeah, because, because, because we use some of it to help fund the operating budget, rather than, rather than taking it from the general fund. So, so we use the rental that, that the policies...
True, but there's no money there to make this year.
Kevin, would you like to share?
Best way to handle that 190,000.
Yeah, basically, what, what happens in the, in the district budget that we allocate, let me rephrase. In a, in, the revolving funds require some level of effort from the, from the, from the full-time staff. And what we do is we allocate the salaries from the full-time staff into the, into certain revolving funds, such as the community ed, and the rental account, and the close secondary account. So, that 190 is a portion of the full-time administrative salary cost related to rental of the building.
But, and it's starting with a, with a balance of 190,000?
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Which is, the balance is not shown here.
Correct.
That's on other documents that we share with the finance subcommittee.
So, maybe a revision of these documents with the balance should be sent out to the membership. That might make it a little bit clearer.
Maybe this'll be more common.
At some point, I'll give you a long history of the revolving funds at Minuteman, and the many years of pain and agony we went through to get them into the very good shape that they are today. So, you should probably be aware of that. So, we're very sensitive...
Of course.
To these, because of all the aggravation and other things they've caused in the past.
I understand.
But I understand, because we were told already that it would be a year transition, which some of this stuff would not be available for us. We do believe that our rentals will come back next year? Yes.
We, yeah, we're still having the same requests. Some people annually request the use of our building, so...
Hopefully, we won't lose those people because of one-year transition. Any reason why we would not be able to do this in this current year? To do the rentals in the following year?
Well, we're just, we're waiting until all the occupancy permits are complete before we would be renting a building.
Good idea.
That's held us up.
Details, details.
So, we're hoping that's gonna all come together very soon, so...
That would be the only road to hang up. Okay, very good, thank you.
'Cause I asked, I'm trying to rent it as soon as possible. Revenue, wherever I can get revenue, I get it.
Anything else on the revolving?
Can I, can I ask Jeff, or just a slight sliver of a painful experience you once had? I mean, like, like, were you worried that too much money was being held in stabilization fund, or were you worried that it was...
No, what, the, the situation was that we had our accounting system on software that was inappropriate for this kind of institution, on equipment that was decades old. And the information we were getting from the system was more attuned to 1970 than the 2000s. So, the information we were getting, what was really happening in the revolving accounts, was insufficient for us to make appropriate decisions on it. And when we started turning over all the rocks, and we got the new auditor, and the new computer system, and the new mahogany, we got all those components together. We spent, I think this is fair to say, a number of years, turning over rocks, looking at each one of these accounts, and deciding, should we eliminate it because it could never be made profitable? Or is there a, a reasonable way for us to share expenses between the operating fund and this, and this fear that reflects the back and forth between them? So, we had negative balances in most of these accounts, which we zeroed out over time. And that was very painful for years to zero them out. And we reviewed each account and decided, go forward with it, fix it, be eliminated. And brought us to a sheet in which we no longer have huge increasing deficits in the revolving accounts, and which we are able to have a few-page report that made sense, instead of dozens of pages, which is what we used to have, that made no sense at all. So, we went along, in fact, it was one of the cornerstones of, before I was willing to vote, move forward for a new building project, this is one of the things we had to get under control, so I can go to my community and say, yes, we really have our finances under control. And say, this is probably the hardest single piece of that foundation. And it took between, it took over five years to get from where we were to where we needed to be.
Thank you.
Okay, so, explains why?
Three minutes summary.
A little more info. Any other comments before we vote? No questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, George, back to you.
Want to finish the field trips, or do you wanna...
We did the field.
Now, we have one more. Why don't we do the last field trip, and then we'll jump to the top? So...
Okay. So, what I got about Revision Energy, the primary commercial electrical outfit. Participating have a big kickoff... Participating have a big kickoff for National Apprentice Week. And they are sponsoring an open house in the Brentwood, New Hampshire location. They have offices in Massachusetts and Maine. We already have three jobs from them posted on our own job board for our kids who are taking. The sophomores, well, twenty-two kids up there to spend the day and check out what they have for jobs and career prospects. Gadgets and whatever else they have, okay, so.
I don't know if there's that extra information there?
Yep, there is. Fifteen sophomores and eight seniors, okay, so twenty-three kids. Up in Brentwood, so that's what I know about it. Sounds like a good idea. And actually, this came from Dr. Boquon Dow to our electrical folks, so.
Kids, do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions on this field trip? Yes.
How many students would be involved in this field trip?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. What would the transportation for these students be?
We provided less.
And the other expenses on the field trip?
Uh, you know, I don't have all the details on the lunches, but usually we're packing lunch for the kids, so that'd be another expense.
But no other expenses.
Although sometimes the kids don't want it, they make separate arrangements, but require lunch.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
What, what the hours of this?
It's a, it's an all-day thing.
It's an all-day thing?
Yeah, they'll be back, they'll be back by Christmas, so, yeah.
I'm just reading it on the.
Okay, was that everyone? I'm sorry, we were doing that. Can I try that again? All in favor? Opposed? Same thing, you. Okay. Thanks. Now we can jump back to the top of your report.
Okay, so, this is sort of the nostalgia file right here with this slide. This is the last time ELA was on paper and pencil. It's changed since, so I just, I presented this slide actually to the Intimate Parents Association meeting the other day. And in conjunction with the title of our meeting. So anyway, I thought I'd share it up here too. Sorry, this feels a little laser. It never disappeared. No, it always, okay. Well, that was the last time we did paper and pencil. Twenty-seventeen was the year that earned us the green ribbon status. If you're just curious, so. Here we are, and now we are in math. Twenty-eighteen, a good year. Okay, however, and you'll notice on the side here the categories. Advanced, proficient, needs improvement, warning, failing. That's also changed with the next generation. The terminology, the categorization, how you get ratings. It's, everything is, it's a whole new ballgame, so. You'll see here, however, for biology, this was the last year of it being under what they call the legacy test, which is paper and pencil. And so I did include those scores up here, so you could see the comparison, pretty steady. And if you look at the warning failing over the years, it really just, you know, really a better at what we do. And making sure the kids pass. Needs improvement means the kids pass.
The chemistry one, I didn't see the.
Chemistry, I didn't put chemistry out there because honestly, usually it's at a hundred percent.
Right.
Sometimes schools I've seen put it as STEM and they run it in there. I feel like it's a little misleading for us. It's usually a hundred percent because it's typically honors level kids who, you know, already have some great skills coming in, so. And if, most of the kids though, really, if you ask, you know, the majority of our kids. Usually it's like twenty kids taking a chemistry, other a hundred and thirty are taking this.
When we talk about one percent of the kids. How many kids is that?
Sometimes it's one.
So a percentage could be one.
Yeah.
And going from one percent to two percent could be one kid.
Right. Exactly, yep, so. And, you know, over the years, people have complained about how they categorize and put kids into categories. Because you could have one, and this happened also for you, is we had one student who failed, but it ended up impacting minority lunch. Free reduced lunch sped, you know, one.
One.
And when you really break it down, you're like, so it's one more kid that failed. It just knocked us right into level two essentially, but. Anyway, that's the fun, the data. All right, so here's the, the new test for ELA. You get the new categories now on the left, so you're no longer advanced, you're exceeding expectations. You're no longer proficient, you're meeting expectations or partially meeting expectations or not meeting expectations. What's interesting is before it was a little easier, you could be needs improvement and still be passing. Now you can be not meeting expectations and still technically be passing.
Really?
Hmm.
Wow.
Yeah. And what they kinda did is they took if, well, if you look at the eight percent of the state average, that was actually what they were shooting for. In their statistical models and their planning. And it basically said, all right, we're gonna take the bottom four percent. You really failed. And if you're in that top four percent, as long as you get an educational proficiency plan and we can determine competency by you finishing your courses, having good attendance, all the rest, you'll, you'll pass.
Is that true for Minuteman? That particular student or students were?
So that one student, half of him really failed.
Yeah, I think he's in the CD area, so we're, we're okay.
Depends what his numbers are.
We're okay, but.
So a plan was written for that?
The plan will be written.
Will be written.
For that one student.
Yep. So here you go, so here's your, so not being able to compare us to anybody else, we just compared to the state averages and, you know.
But because they're the average, that's what it is.
Percentages.
Dream or is that?
No, no, that's, that's actual reality, sorry, thank you for that. That's what the state had. They were shooting for, I just remember the eight percent because it always stuck out in my head, I'm like, you're cutting it in half, why don't you just make another category? But, you know, again, that's what they do. So, yeah, so I think based, you know, compared to the state, we held our own, we did well. Obviously, we wanted to push more kids up into that exceeding expectations category, but for first time through. This test was interesting this year, I don't know if you caught wind of it. They had to throw out an entire essay question on the test.
I would read that one.
Yeah, okay, and so, of course, you know, if you asked our ELA department, what did you really feel like you prepared really well for, for the next gen is? Oh yeah, it's the narrative question, narrative essay, which is the exact one they threw out. Or one of the ones they threw out, so. Right, and which they will not be included going forward because they wanna keep their data consistent. So now, yes, the good news is all the kids have one last essay they need to write on their, on their ELA.
And why did they throw it out?
Uh, because, well, the question basically was, you know, you read a passage and you, and it said, you know, take on the voice of the slave owner. Write from your perspective, you know, about this situation with this slave. So no matter what you do, you're basically getting a defense of slavery. Which, I mean, the phones are blowing up that day. How, what can you do? Which is also, I don't, I don't know, also know if you caught wind of this, well, what they said over the summer was, they don't believe that it impacted the failure rate. They did however change six student scores who they think may have been, you know, impacted by failing because of not grading that essay. Who knows what could have happened? So the next question was, yeah, but did it affect anybody from going into the higher categories? And so they said, well, we're gonna wait and see. And about a week before we had time to register, we have to re-register kids who don't pass. Uh, they issued their, you know, this is what you gotta do. Oh, by the way, we've decided that ninety of your students here may have been negatively impacted from, you know, getting into an exceeding. So you gotta offer them the opportunity to do a retake on paper and pencil if you wish, you know. And I'm on a chain with all the other curriculum director in the vocational world.
Ninety?
We had ninety, we had other schools at three hundred, like almost your entire sophomore class. Just, I think they decided at the last minute, you know, we're gonna just cover a tushy and just let you offer it to everyone who may have, may, maybe, maybe. And, you know, so they got a lot of, a lot of anger from, again, from a lot of people around the state to say, really? That's really last minute, you know, asking us to do this. We only had, I think, six kids take us up on that offer, you know. Because it really, in the end, the only difference it would make is if you liked being in another category. But where it would matter is if you're applying to state school and you have an opportunity for the Adams Scholarship, so. You know, we explained all that to the kids, we held an assembly, you know, we sent letters home. We put it, we posted it on our websites to try to get the information out so the kids would understand, so. Anyway, yeah.
What are the consequences to, to students who, who don't pass? Do they not get a diploma or what, what is?
Correct, you get a certificate of attainment or attendance.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they get another chance to take it.
Yeah, the retest is coming up in.
I mean, they keep going.
Two weeks. Yeah, you get, you get the five chances.
Well, that I understand, I, I tell you that at the very end, when it's all said and done.
All said and done, you don't get a diploma.
You don't get a diploma.
You're not technically graduate.
Yeah, okay.
You walk across the stage, you can get a piece of paper, you can be done, you're not a graduate of.
How many, we have, we, yearly, do we have people?
No, but we, we've had them, you know, we've had kids who, that, that, that happens, you know, it does. Sometimes they're interested, you know, the kids who just really have a struggle. Or we've had, one of my saddest cases was a girl who moved here from Chile for junior year. Fantastic in culinary, just unbelievable. Because she had actually had culinary training in Chile, which to get into the school there was amazing. But to come here, she just couldn't get the language skills up enough, and then, yeah, it was, it was hard. She went back to Chile. I'm sure she has a recipe for that. Uh, so here's our math scores, you know, again, I think we did, we're really proud of the, that not meeting expectations. There are a few kids who do need to do the retest as a result of being in that bottom three percent, they're in the bottom three percent. But that's pretty good out of the, out of the gate. Maybe I'll, I'll, I know there was another question on that agenda. So, there you go. If you wanna see some comparative data, let's talk about the new classifications, because, you know, I remember Bob asking, are we still level one? Nope, because there's, there's no such thing as level one anymore. So we have a whole new set of, of classification. The top being school recognition, but in order to get that, you have to be in the meet and exceeds category. And then they'll pick a few, and we're talking a few, half a dozen. They're not really looking at grabbing a lot of schools to call them. That's really what we would have been in the blue ribbon category status before that. We were commissioners, commendations, seven high schools in the state, so very select. But you can be the meet and exceeds, meet and exceeds target, substantial progress toward goals, moderate progress, limited progress, focus support, broad comprehensive support. The way they do that now, the way they determine it, they have a cumulative score range. And so you can see the ranges there, what gets you to what category. It's a nice meet number out of a hundred, which is nice. The cumulative score range is not just based on the scores, but it is also based on your attendance data, your graduation data. Um, what percentage of your kids are taking advanced courses, for example, is now all part of the, of that calculation in determining your score. An important thing here on the, on the far right is, you know, do you need to do more paperwork and have to do business all the time? You can see it, it takes all the way down to focus support and broad comprehensive support before you need to start throwing all that extra paperwork and doing work. So, in that, we are in substantial progress toward goals. So we, we scored at a sixty-eight overall composite score, which is good. This is just a comparison to some of the other popular, I guess, we always talk about. Schools like us, I V T, you know, regional vocationals. So you can see on that list, we really are on the top of that, of that list. We're doing, we're doing pretty well. But even if you're in moderate progress, you're still not getting a state major, which is good for them, I'm glad.
Do you, but any chance have that for our member towns?
That's the next one.
You mean this one?
Yes.
How about that? Yeah, so you could see, you know, and I did it by district. You could, you could dig down into the specific high school, the high school. And I started to do that a little bit, but it really wasn't, I did two in a row, and you know what? But this, it's basically the same over anyway, so I was just gonna use this. And this is more accessible to people, and that's what will get published, you know, in the global, whatever, so. You know, you can see, you know, where they are, we're pretty favorable in the show up. And Arlington, we're pretty close to that.
They're very different schools, I mean, we're very different.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
A different student comes here.
It's, yeah, but there's no reason, you know, obviously, we're, our goal is to be in the meet and exceeds. I mean, we're, yeah, I know that, so what? You know, once we continue to wanna go forward. I think some of the driver for that, they just released some more notes, you know, like last week, about the accountability. And one of the things that this particular memo said was that, oh, by the way, if you're a chapter seventy-four program and you have articulation agreements, that can count as having kids in advanced courses. Oh, well, it turns out, we have a ton of those. What we don't have, which these folks have, which is, you know, I think Lexington has nineteen different AP offerings.
Right.
And we're never gonna have that, I mean, yeah, you're right, we're different there. But, but we have what we have, which is we have Project Leadaway, which is another one. And there's articulation here, so it's, you know, we're gonna meet and talk about, you know, well, then, it's all about then, how do you code the kids? And how do you represent the data to the state so that it gets reported the way we want it to be reported? We also noticed something else too, and we've already made this change for this year. But for years, if a student left us, you know, if, we were coding some things wrong, which maybe, maybe depressed our own data a little bit. In terms of attendance rate and, and maybe even dropout rate a little bit. Because a kid might not ever really show up here, said they were gonna come, didn't actually show up. And we would write the date that they, we figured out that they were no longer here, but it made it seem like, oh, well, they were here and they left. But we've come to understand that actually, if that's the case, you can backdate until like mid-July, you know, it's like it doesn't hurt you anymore. Ah, interesting. So I, I, I'm hoping for, you know, if we do some of those things, just report our data a little more smugly, that will help. But also, you know, doing what we do in terms of academics and how we approach preparing for the test, which is. And I know there was a question, I think it's the, you know, preparation for MCAS two point oh. And that really began two summers ago, where we, we put out a lot of, we had two teams, multidisciplinary teams for ELA. So that included obviously the English teachers, but also a pretty good handful of special educators. Same thing for math. They took all the information we were getting from the state and began to talk about, all right, how are we gonna, how are we gonna prepare the kids for this? Because it is a difference between paper and pencil, just that alone and going on the computer. You know, it's very different. I used the analogy the other day, I'll spare you all the details I gave, but it's, we always think like, well, well, these kids have been using computers since they were born, should be, should be fine. Should, for them to just natural, so for them to do it. So, well, we're finding out, it's sort of like saying, you know, you know how to do your dishes and, you know, take a shower. So jumping into plumbing really shouldn't be that hard, right? I mean, you kinda get what's supposed to happen here, so it should be easy. Not really, so where that shows up in the computer is if you're talking about, well, I need you to toggle between two screens. I need you to click on this tool that highlights, because that's how you're representing your answer now. Doesn't necessarily mean that they know how to do that, you know, well, it's limited, you know, they interact with computers, but not so as deep as we think. Yeah.
Uh, just a comment on that, as a teacher who has gone through the training of how to monitor the damn test. It is the number of tools that the students have to be proficient at in order to be able to answer the questions. In order for the automated tools not to get in their way is substantial. It's very unpleasant moving from the paper and pencil test to most students to the online test. There's a lot that you have to train them, that takes a lot of hours before they're comfortable using the tools that you need to be successful in taking the test. So I am very aware of the challenge of the transition from the kid's point of view. And I don't really think that there's a lot of benefit from measuring the kid's ability by going to the computer. I think it's just trying to save money.
So it's all, all the way through fourth grade then, right? So they, they start?
Yeah, it should get easier as they come and they've been more.
So this is the first year, they, this was the first time these kids have ever seen it.
Yeah.
Whereas the next time, they will have seen it at least one year.
Yep, they should have seen it in eighth grade.
Okay.
You know, we ran the pilots, it's another, you know, as part of preparation, we ran all the pilots that we could prior, you know. In part because we just wanted to help stress test our own system and see, you know, which, what are the glitches gonna be when you go on? Oh, nothing goes on, whoops, that's bad. So, we did, so we've done all that. Right now, you know, I've talked with the, we have a two-point people who really helped coordinate MCAS testing. And one of them is Tag, is, she's an exemplary teacher. And she, she's changing her, well, her goal for this year for, as part of her evaluation, is to really work on developing some, some lesson plans around the persuasive writing piece. Because when we look at the data, we could see that, yep, that's a place where we could probably get stronger. So she's really working on developing that, and then the second half of her goal is really sharing that within the department, to make sure that we have, you know, we're all working together on that. I know that in math, the place where we saw the greatest struggles with the quadratic equations and word problems that ultimately involve rows. So, we're looking at, they use a lot of technology in math, like Ready, you know, Kahoot and Desmos and Khan Academy and StarMath. They're looking at Pearson, who also publishes the test, because Pearson's claiming, you know, we're gonna give you more like samples. Because that's part of the problem, is there's not, there are no materials to use, so you're, it's not like in the past, where you had this big library of stuff that you could use. Now you're, well, what's, what's the nearest facsimile to practice? I don't know, but Pearson might have some stuff, so we're taking a look at that.
So no comment, at the beginning of the real MCAS, the original MCAS, they had the same situation, there were very few books available, and it took a number of years for material to come out. I also remember how challenging it was at first for Minuteman, when they first started the test, and how quickly the school ramped up the effort and improved the score. So I have no doubt that that's gonna happen this time too. Materials will be available and you will figure out how to do it, just like it did before.
A lot of work goes into this.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, that's all, if the materials aren't there, we'll create them, we'll, we'll, we'll put on the gas all the time, that's, that's, that's the motto. So anyway, this, I guess this will conclude the, more or less the MCAS part, I guess, a little bit of on the admissions end, you know, this is the one slide, I know we could put gazillions of information on for you, but I figured this was a pretty succinct, uh, look at the last couple of years, you know, of enrollment, information, what's been going on. You know, the yield, the yield's seventy-two percent, so we've increased the yields about one percent from the year before. But, you know, it's really, in the end, the what, the only number that matters is the enrollment number, you know, if we, if we had a hundred and fifty kids and a hundred and fifty, you know, and it was a hundred percent yield, that's great, you know. If it takes five hundred apps to get a hundred and fifty, well, then that's what it takes, you know, so, but, there it is.
So John had chaired with me the mid-September numbers, and it was one ninety-three, did you take three kids off the waitlist, or, 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 or was that just?
We had a few, uh, no, we haven't taken any, we took, actually, I'm sorry, we did take one kid off the waitlist. Can I put another kid? Sometimes, sometimes what you get in the very beginning are, you know, you get data glitches. So, you know, when a kid applies, you know, sometimes it can be as simple as they, you're asking them, what, you, what, what are you applying for? Or you're asking them for information, they might check grade nine, well, they're not in grade nine, they want to go into grade nine. That's not the question we ask them though, so then in the system, once we import the data, starts with looking in, you know, sometime in, okay, here's a ninth grader. And then we go through the summer, and it converts them to a tenth grader, because that's what it does, and then we have to go back and look at them, wait, wait a minute, why is this kid? Yeah, this isn't matching, something isn't matching, so those kind of things you catch, it's probably just.
The thirty-eight were processed, what happened, what happened with all that? I noticed a class of two thousand twenty not processed, and then, anyway, what, what happened to those processed applicants?
In that, for that class, that was the year the, the rules changed, and when you could, we could know how to get the kids.
We're kind of, I understand that, but what about the class of two thousand twenty-three?
So thirty-eight process, so that means those are kids that, you know, when they applied, we told them pretty early on, like, uh, well, you know, your, your hometown has a exploratory program. You know, so here are the rules, you're probably, probably not gonna get them, but if you want to go through the process and take a shot at it, you can, we'll, we'll do that with you. But just full disclosure upfront, you know, we can accept you all day long, and if they don't sign that chapter seventy-four, it doesn't matter.
Do they want any of them come?
Yeah, yeah, you get some random, you know, it's, it's just, that's why, it's kind of why we, the first year, we just tried to follow the line, plus we had a hundred and forty, we didn't, it was, that was a lot.
I think it would be interesting to see, I'd say, next time you do the summaries, because I'll say how many of those process ineligible kids can just.
We could, I could do that for you, because that's right there in the enrollment data.
Don't do it now, just next time around, I'd be interested to see.
The number as of mid-September was fourteen.
Out of the thirty-eight.
Out of your, out of your, out of what, John, you, yeah, sounds all right. Because like I say, you just, you just, you never know what's gonna happen, what district's gonna do it. So, so anyway, we have events coming up, we have our eighth, eighth grade exploratory day coming up. It's gonna be Sunday, eleven seventeen, from ten to one, because there's a little flyer or mailer that's gonna be going out, like, this week on that. We have our in-district showcase day, which is eleven twenty-one, it's Thursday, so that's the district field trip for the kids coming up. We have us, we have seven more schools we need to visit between now, you know, between then and now. Couple more this week that we're gonna head out and visit, there are fifty-two kids.
Have you heard of all the schools that you want to hear from? Have you heard of all those?
Yes, we did, the, the stray in the whole cause was Bolton. And then I, I gave him that one last, you know, listen, you just need to know, the superintendent's telling me that if I don't hear from you today, it's going to the DESI, and, you know, we, I'm really trying to help you out here. If you don't want to do it, and no one, I don't want to, you know, and suddenly it's, oh here, there's everything you need, and let's talk, so. We have a late date with them, November fifth is their date. And just, that's what happens, because they're, they're too, you know, too late, they want, the days they want are already ahead of their books, so. And then, then Concord too, and Concord has been super accommodating, and there's just one thing we didn't get was the, the address list. But they, but I think it's just partially because they're, they're also learning a whole new routine over there, two schools merging into one. You know, but they gave us everything else we wanted, and it was fantastic.
So as far as how's the response been for these?
Uh, right now, we have fifty-two kids that have signed up, I mean, last year, we had four hundred kids walk through the door for that field trip. Something that's just a calendar kind of anomaly this year, it's not the way I wanted it, but just the way it worked in this year. Usually, we do the showcase day, and then we go to the open house, this year, we're doing it backwards. So we'll see how this, we'll see how, I don't, even if it works out fine, and I think it will for the open house, because I have a feeling we're gonna be keeping people, wanting to keep people, which is why we're changing the name of it to Eighth Grade Exploratory Day. Because I, I was kind of hesitant to have this, our main focus dissipate with thousands of visitors looking at other things, when our real mission has always been recruiting. That's what this event has always been about, so we've changed the name. So we'll see how it goes, I think it'll, we'll still have bodies in the building, and I think we'll go right back to making sure that calendar is set up the way.
So when is the showcase day?
Showcase day is eleven twenty-one. So it's a couple of days after that.
Are you comfortable with, with the, with the superintendent's goal that's set tonight of one hundred and sixty from, from the parent member pens?
Yep. Correct answer. I mean, I, you know, I, I think if you were, you were in the office last year, whether, the number was one fifty-seven, so when we hired Maggie, you know, I, I, she has a, she had a whiteboard, and I wrote the number in a corner. You know, and so she would always talk about, isn't this good, isn't this number good, isn't this great, be like, mhm, is it this yet? Okay, then, okay, so when it's that, then we'll, you know.
Celebrate.
Well, no, we'll celebrate when it's like beyond that, but when it gets to that, that's when it's that, so. But yeah, I, I think I'm comfortable with that.
Do you have a sense of the new building being a draw with kids coming, interested in coming here because of it, or because the kids are going back and telling their friends?
Uh, well, I do think our kids are going back telling their friends, and it's good buzz, we're using, we scrapped our old admissions video this year, because it features the old building. It's, it's really powerful, but it features the old building, so Andrew's done enough filming around here that we asked him to just put a little something together, and he did. So we're really trying to emphasize that the best we can, so, so we'll see, you know, it's still, right now, if you're, you know, if you're asking me about the receipt from being in this, I've done a couple of presentations looking at the kids. Right this minute, I'm not feeling a tremendous, I, it feels about the same, like, there's still that skepticism, yeah, it's great to be building, but I don't know, Minuteman, I don't know, I don't know. That hasn't changed so far yet, we'll see, we'll see, it's still really early.
I'm seeing, like, placards, I don't know what to call them, they're signs that mean the sign code in our town, uh, for the different private schools, you know, when they're, when it is things, you know, when you can go and visit the school, things like that. I was driving out of the grocery store when there was one of these things today, and are we doing anything like that?
It starts with, I can't find where the old ones were, I don't know where they are, we had a whole bunch that we had, that our plan was to stick stuff on them, I don't, I don't, I don't think they made it over.
Oh yeah, I should put one on my lawn.
Yeah, right, so we were, Maggie was testing them the other day, yeah, where are those, I have no idea. Uh, that might be one piece we drop from our campaign this year, I don't know if I get them, weren't this fast enough, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the same vendor that we've, we've had a relationship with.
I actually think that was pretty helpful in my campaign, since we had sixteen kids, freshmen, I think, and I'd only put up one sign, but I know where to put it.
Yeah, yeah, you sound like John, well, I give like five or six to John than I do, who sticks them everywhere and I don't, you know, it's all it takes, is a few well-placed. I mean, we are, we are gonna go back and, I'm just finalizing the P O for a radio campaign like we did last year, but this year, we're gonna get an iHeartRadio app as well. So you won't just be on the radio, it'll be, you know, if you're having, having on your phone, it'll pop up, you know, so we're working on that. Direct mailing is still probably our number one way that we're, we're doing that. We also bought a list from mailways, so we, we need to get the district ones for some targeted valings that we want to do, plus we need to get the district ones as a show of good faith in the partnership that we have. So they will always give us that, but, you know, I've also noticed over the years, you would have families saying, yeah, but I go to a private school, I didn't even know anything about this till the last minute. So we bought a list on top of it, so we're just making sure we blanket, you know, all the areas and every address that, you know, fits the profile that we've been touching, it's pretty cheap, it's like twelve bucks.
I mean, and just stop looking for the old signs if you're spicy.
Yeah, I know, no, I know, I, I, I looked, I don't, I.
That's what I was thinking.
I have no idea, I know we had a box of them, I just have no idea where it was.
They're gone.
Yep, and those are gone, so.
Off one of my lawn, if you can.
Okay, so those too, because I'm running back, I want you to know when we have.
Well, we'll be hearing more about enrollment from the enrollment task force, because it sounds like, you know what, we've been saying that there's, there's good energy, but we can't let up the gas.
Never.
Yeah, you know, I, I'll probably have a better picture for folks, honestly, in February. Because kids will, we, even the calls that we get right now, will, you know, which are familiar, but we get calls, and they'll say, look, apply after Halloween, you gotta at least have first quarter grades in here, because there's no, that's where the things will kick in. So between then, and then we have open house, well, eighth grade exploratory day, showcase day, and a shadow day right before Christmas. And that's when they're really beginning to get the direct message for, those are hot leads, those are kids being told, apply now, 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 and we'll have a better sense of it at least. Are we beating the trends, are the apps really up, are they about the same, where we're at, I don't know by then for sure, or have a better idea, better forecast.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Okay, I think we are back to the world of finance. Bob, I think we are on stabilization fund authorization.
Oh, I'm sorry, stabilization, so, um, uh, tonight, I'd be asking for you to authorize the expenditures not to exceed sixty thousand from the stabilization fund account for the purchase, the purpose of purchasing automotive tools. Snap-on tools are recognized as a leader in the industry, they're the only vendor that offers vocational schools, um, tools at a fifty percent discount through the Massachusetts state blanket contracts. Uh, if this authorization is approved, the stabilization account will still have a balance of six hundred and forty-eight thousand and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Because as we talked about earlier, we do have some needs to use that money elsewhere. The school, the school finance subcommittee reviewed the associated documents for this agenda item at their September meeting, they approved forwarding this agenda to the full committee for your approval.
Do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I like the note, it's the only vendor that gives a fifty percent discount to vocational schools.
Okay.
We like discounts.
I think it's neat that they've gotten rid of the cages.
Right, right.
That's a positive step for that kind.
Yeah, I think I put in there that it's more like industry standard, which is what we're always striving, all of our expenditures, we try to make them student-centered, and this is one of those.
Yeah. All in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Um, budget calendar?
So this is an item for informational purposes, the school committee finance subcommittee reviewed this document at their last meeting in September. This is very similar to the schedule that has been in place in previous years, and at this time, we're on target to meet those dates identified. I have to thank Amy and George, because they both really helped me make a lot of that happen, so it's a team effort, and everybody's really chipping in. Oh, and Michelle Shepherd also, has been doing amazing work, uh, and part of the finance team. So this was for informational purposes, there's not a need for vote, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What is our first town meeting now?
Oh, um, it is.
It's not Lincoln.
It used to be Lincoln, right.
I don't, so, I, I, does anyone here think they're the first town meeting?
Well, we're March, I don't.
We're March, okay, so it may be, it may be Lexington.
So we still need to have this in early February.
Okay, RFP contracted clean?
So again, this is for informational purposes, but the RFP for contracted clean services was signed with MP Building Services on September ninth, with its nineteenth, with a start date of October first, and an expiration date of June twenty twenty. However, the contract does include two additional option years at Minuteman's discretion. Unlike an RFP, which is a request for bids, which is really solely placed, uh, based on price, an RFP, the process is really based on qualifications. And only after selection, the selection process is gone through for the best qualified candidate, can you then open the price proposals. Uh, in this RFP process, MP Building Services was clearly the most responsible and responsive bidder out of the eight bidders that participated. In addition to having great references and high quality standards, their price proposal was approximately a hundred thousand dollars less than we projected in our budget for this current fiscal year. And if they work out as well as they appear to be working out in the first month of their contract, and we retain them next year, they'll still be at fifty-five thousand dollars under what we were projecting it costs. And if we keep them for a third year, they'll still be at thirty-five thousand dollars under the projection, so, uh, this was a win-win, this RFP. We've already been impressed by their management and the quality that they provided in this first month.
Question, just how long have they been in business?
They've been around a long time, and they had references from major districts within our region.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Bob.
My pleasure, thank you.
Moving on to school building committee report, board.
I need somebody to operate the, figure out.
Do we have a video or just pictures?
I'm giving a talk, so I don't have to speak, you can just watch me up there.
Video.
Oh no, don't shut down.
Is this, is gonna take a minute? Okay.
I mean, we can do it without a visual if we want.
We could vote to a jury.
Well, we, we have other business we can move on to, oh.
Why don't I just?
What's that?
Many hands, mic burp.
I can't see, that's what's on the screen, so if we see that in a second, we're good.
That number keeps on coming.
I think that's the number of seconds we have to wait before.
Why don't I just do it?
Why don't I just do it, and we'll, we'll not have pictures. Basically, we're now in the punch list job here. And we started out with about three thousand items. It sounds like a lot, but most of them are very minor. It can be paint that has to be touched up. So painting is a huge part of it. We are doing some work, as you know, on stairs throughout the building, so we're doing some work on there. But we got the list down last week to five hundred. We can do three, four, five hundred a week. Sometimes two or three hundred a night. But now we're back up to seven hundred, because we're now into the theater doing punch lists. And those will all go very quickly. The elevator inspector came in the other day, or yesterday, I believe, and there's a pit, which is down below the floor. And he was in here before, I think it was, he was in here before, and he didn't bring this up. He decided he wanted to have a railing down below the pit. So we've now ordered one and that'll be installed by the end of the week. So it's that kind of thing that's going on. They're in here in the evenings and on weekends. So it's really moving along very well. There are a few major things again, like the bell system. They're having a terrible time with the, with the bells here. Last night, the bell worked, and this morning, the bell didn't work, so-
Bell in the classroom.
Classroom bell, so now it's all done by announcements. And, but that is being worked out. The three major ones are up by the child center. We are working on the playground over there, and that should be done within the next, oh, two or three weeks. The greenhouse is taking a little bit longer, because they're waiting for a couple of parts. They're coming in from, I think it's Holland. But that will be done by mid-November. The theater, as I said, is really ready, almost ready to go. So November fourth is a key date for us. The Department of Education comes in to certify, and we think we'll be ready for everything to be certified, including the theater, including the greenhouse. We can get those so that'd be certifiable. Barrett Road is gonna be paved on or near November four also, so we'll go back to our original entrance and exit the way we're doing it. Lincoln really doesn't want us to use our, the current one, so we will be using the old one, and that road will be done. The fence was, will be moved from, as you're coming in here, from the right to left, so they can start demolition, demolition. They will start demolition within the next two or three, about three weeks. Abatement is just about all done. And pretty much the building, there's some equipment that is still left, but most of that's gonna be going in dumpsters, so that's pretty much taken care of. So we're really, we're moving along very well. The ribbon cutting, some of you were, most of you were there. We had about two-hundred-and-twenty-five guests, town officials, and from the state, the state officials, et cetera. I thought it was spectacular that Mary Ann Hand did a very good job in coordinating, as well as with Russell's staff.
I thought the picture in the paper was wonderful.
Oh, the, the report, the reporting that we've had is terrific.
Showed, you know, the whole, all the students around, it's just a wonderful photo.
That was wonderful.
The students, if you, if you didn't see it, I had a picture, but the students circled around the, the building and, and, I mean, the room, and that really made it. And the staff. I think having students and staff there, to me, that was extremely special. The rest of us were not all that important, but they were really important, and they did a good job. So, everything's going fine. We still meet weekly, going through all the punch list. The team is, is working ahead. And, well, that's my report.
The, the final occupancy report, is that a, a curve? Is that waiting for the punch list to be finished?
We have to get finished the punch list, and then the Department of Education has to sign off. And then that should be coming along, I think, another month or two?
It sounds like it.
Two months left.
And that, and that will lead to the curve.
Thank you.
And, and what is, what is the timetable for the building now, to me? To be talking about the fields and the, the old site?
Well, that's a really good question. You know, we do have, in, in our job, we are to take down the building and put in fields. It's still under discussion, and is going out, and we're gonna look at the pro forma to make sure our numbers are right in terms of the amount of income that we could be getting in. So that is still out there from a due diligence point of view, when we have that. There was one other piece we're looking at.
Yeah, we'll be talking about that a little later.
In exactly the same.
Okay, 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 okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
I'll have a picture show for you next time, when we figure that out.
Any other questions for Ford? Ribbon cutting was wonderful. Yeah, it was, it was really a great organization. And I know I was really happy to have some people from my town be able to be here. They were really, really impressed.
I do have one other thing, and I hope a notice goes out from the school, but November seventeenth, we're having an open house, which is open to the community. I have two, uh, when it should be done, I have one to four, I think is what it is. So I hope a notice goes out to the school committee, building committee, and other people. I'm making sure a lot of people from my town and some family members can come out, and you all should do, do the same thing. Because we couldn't do it during, during the ribbon cutting, because students were here. But that will be a great opportunity.
Was some-
Coinciding with?
Yeah, I-
Is it the same date?
It is the same date.
We're going from ten to one, so I guess you could just keep the party rolling.
I didn't set the date, so.
We'll have to clarify that and get the information.
I think we oughta got a clarification, because it'd be crazy to have it both the same day.
So the exploratory day in the morning.
And we need to straighten that quickly, because the word's getting out.
Right. Yeah, that's, before we tell people.
Yeah, so if-
So, so Julia, will you send something out clarifying that for us? Thank you.
It's been articles in newspapers, it is.
It's been in the newspaper, and that's all.
And they, and they sometimes use your time, time, time slot, so I, I've been thinking that it was a coinciding with that.
Okay, I-
I don't think it should.
No, it can't.
Okay, so you better-
That would be a mess.
Yeah.
You don't think it'll make it-
Is, is the school closed on, on Veterans Day?
Yes.
I mean, I mean, what do you wanna do it on?
I, I think, I didn't set the dates, so I think the administration needs to take a look at that. I think George's is more important.
Except if people show, yes.
You know, panel.
Okay, okay, so, so you all get back to us and let us know how the dates will shake out. Okay. Any other, any questions for Ford? Thank you.
Thanks for the date.
Okay, moving on to subcommittee reports. That should say Jeff for the enrollment task force.
So the enrollment task force did meet, and the issue that we are most concerned about right now is a personnel issue. We still do not have a communications director. We do not have a new admissions director. And George can only do so many different jobs at once. So we're hoping that these positions will be filled over the next few weeks, but this is, lack of personnel is making it harder to put the gas to the floor. So I'm very concerned about the bandwidth we have to do all the things we would like to have happen. So we're hoping that we will have a communications director in mid-November, and an admissions director shortly thereafter, so George can focus on, on being just the principal.
And not looking for signs.
And not looking for signs. But this, but this is an issue, a little concern that we had a great year last year. If we don't push forward, maybe that trend will take a temporary dip.
Be good, be good, Jeff. Two, two years ago, we were down, especially in the, in the, out of district in Georgia, said that he was taking over some work on the I T side. So I, I'm worried that we have an example of what happens when you have more jobs.
Right, but, you know, what can we do right now?
What's sleep? Sleep is the role of the-
You can't have it in either of those positions. Those are positions of people of ability.
Well, and relationship development, so.
It's, these are probably pretty hard, harder-than-average positions to fill, to fill. So, we discussed the idea of full enrollment, and how vague it is in our minds at this point to how many different people, and of course, it may depend partly on the makeup of how many you get in one career path versus another career path. And it's not clear in the administration's mind what the real number is that we wanna shoot for every year. It's something that Ed believes will know a lot better at the end of this year. But, so it's still kind of a misty idea of what the right number is. Time will tell. That's why it's, one-sixty is the number we got for our, our goal this year. Who knows, maybe we'll have a different idea of what it should be in another year or two. It's just something we're gonna have to learn from, partly from experience.
I mean, I mean, the, the goal is for member kids, and then the question really is, what's the total, total?
Numbers to the load-bearing ability of the real world, load-bearing ability of the-
Do you have a range? Do you have a, do you have a, do you have a possible range?
Uh, I, I think that Ed, I tried to, I tried to, you know, narrow it down. And he was, I think, even more reluctant to give a number now than he was when I tried to narrow it down before. So I think that we really want to, we know that it's significantly more than six-twenty-eight, the maximum we're gonna have in here. What it really is, not sure. Time will tell. Maybe seven hundred, maybe less, maybe more.
The, the number I'm using in Belmont, based on a conversation that months ago, is seven hundred. And, and that's, and that's one-eighty times.
That's a good guess.
The other, the other number that's used is that people talk about the design capacity being eighty-five percent of max, and that works out to seventy. So, I mean, I'm just, within Belmont, I, I had to talk about these things.
To us, it's, it's still vague and unknown. I think, you know, the number I'm using in my head is seven hundred-ish.
Okay.
And then there is one of the projects of the enrollment task force that is coming to fruition, which is the rollout of the memorage, memo of understanding regarding student access between Minuteman and its member towns. That document has been revised. I think that the timeframe will be, it'll be in your packet for the next meeting. We'll discuss it at the next meeting, to get approval of the school committee to, to say, yes, this is what we think is the appropriate understanding of the role of the member towns, what they should be doing in terms of allowing access for the student. Now, how we actually discuss that with the various towns, that may require a little bit of thought. But the document itself has had enough revisions that I think we're going to present it to the full school committee at our next meeting. It should be in your next packet.
Jeff, how does it articulate the admissions process?
I think the admission, I don't know if they really talk about the two, because one is process. The other is a legal document saying who, who, who is allowed into the school, as opposed to what you can do to allow us to communicate versus what is the highly legal and political, to some extent political, because that document has to go to the Department of Education, and has to comply with their laws and their current politics, too. So they're two different things. There, there are, there are legal things that communities are supposed to do to give us access to students. But there's also the particular way that we do admissions, which kind of gives them additional responsibilities beyond what is the minimal strictly legal stuff. And what we did, and we've done for a while, is to, and this was the administration and school committee members, is try to complete a comprehensive document of what we think should happen, the communication portion of the admissions process, as opposed to the technical and legal document that we use to choose which students actually come to the school. I think that's a fair way of putting it.
Alice, did you-
Probably would I get to just, like, put it side by side and make sure they match? If there was a section I would put them.
They did show us also the admissions calendar, the various stages of what happens during the admissions process. I don't think that was in your packet. I think that we did get a copy of that. Should probably be given to all school committee members, so maybe in the next packet, that can be there as well. We talked briefly about reviewing the role of the parent liaisons, and how effective they've been. I think we'll be talking more about that in the future. We discussed a document, which was a draft public information budget, the first attempt to put together a budget which demonstrates what the cost of the public information effort is. And that's a hard document to put together, because you have to tease apart, you know, somebody's job, it's not all gonna do public information. So what part of it do you put in this document? What don't you? And I think it'll take them a while to get it right. So I don't think that's a document that we should distribute at this time. I think there should be another few evolutions of it before it's ready to discuss publicly. And that's basically the, I think, the main features of our meeting, unless, Alice, you have something else to add to it? No, we're gonna try to schedule another meeting for the first week or so of November, because I'll have Julia send the information out of that. That's what we'll probably schedule for next meeting. And hopefully, in mid-November, we'll have a communications director on board. We'll see. That's the report.
Sounds like quite a action-packed meeting.
Action-packed is the right word.
Any questions on enrollment? Okay, let's move on to strategic planning task force. Sue?
Yes, so, as you saw, we have basically one objective right now, which is to come up with a process that makes sense for Minuteman for leadership succession. And to do that, we're talking to a number of people who are specialists in this area. And basically, you should be hearing more about this, I believe, at the November meeting. Okay, Pam?
See if there's any flat. Okay, Alice?
Okay, so in your packet, you guys got the revised admissions policy. Julie, did you get a chance to print out that?
Yes.
Okay. We have for you, you'll recall that at the last time that we reviewed this, there were comments from both Sue and Jeff. Jeff had some, his written comments, and Sue had some. So we actually went through every single comment, and, and reviewed the document, and made some decisions about what we were going to send forward to you as a recommendation. So Amy, and Dave Horton, and Jim Piamal, and I spent a long time reviewing this. And I wanna go through these, because I wanna make sure that everybody understands what was changed. There was no redline copy of this document in the packet. We, we'll try to make sure you get redline copies. But I have a copy of both versions here, so if there's any questions, I can find the original for you. So the first thing that we did is we looked at the introduction, and there was a, a question of whether we should talk about behavior, of the criteria for admissions in the introduction, and we decided it was already addressed in section seven, selection criteria, so that would be redundant, we didn't include it. Section three, by the way, most of this stuff is, is kind of required sections from the Department of Education. If you go on their website, you can see their sort of boilerplate. They were, they want you to produce a document which is user-friendly for the students. Actually, it says that right in there, that they want you to have it, the language to be simpler and so forth. So we actually spent quite a lot of time simplifying the language, and hopefully it's better than the original. So Section 3 paragraph on transfer students, we took it out because it was repetitive, it was covered somewhere else. The section on school choice is, it's posed as a negative. The district does not participate in the school choice program unless the school committee's annual required program determines otherwise. And there was some discussion about changing the order of that, so it was more, you know, less negative, more positive. Because we hadn't discussed this at the school committee meeting, and there's never been an issue with it, we decided to leave it the way it was, but we were not unanimous in that, so. Section 4. Okay, in Section 4, if you, there's a second paragraph which actually needs a space in front of it, starts to ensure. That part is added to explain why we're at it. We have a slot allotment for member towns for seats, because otherwise it wasn't obvious why you're doing that. We did some clarification edits on Section 6, they weren't substantive. Section 7. In Section 7, someone had asked a question at the school committee meeting about, trying to find what page that's on. Uh, it's kind of page 6 of the document, it's page 29 of your packet. So Section 7 in A, where it says scholastic achievement, we parenthetically added that there's five points for each subject, because there was a question about that. It wasn't clear to someone in the committee, we decided it wasn't clear to the committee, it wasn't gonna be clear to the parents or students either. So this should be easier for them to understand.
Thank you.
You're welcome. In the fourth paragraph, the word Minuteman was changed, uh, no, I, I made a mistake here. I think it was changed from Min. Yeah, no, that's right. It was changed to Minnum because that was a mistake. And then Section 10, somebody, I think it was Jeff, wanted to know if resident students have priority for program choice. The administration, Amy, reported to us that this hadn't really been an issue yet. A number of non-resident students is going down, so we didn't choose to make any change to that section.
And the observation that I thought we talked about was that it's, it seems like the state regulations do not provide, certainly not just the courage for treating non-residents differently.
Once they're in the school, they're in the school.
Yeah, right, once you're in, they're in, so. So we thought that, you know, the safest thing if we were to present it to Jesse was not to claim that.
Just bring it up, because it has been a conversation point for ten years. As to whether one of the leverages we could have over people joining the district is to say that if your student is outside of the district, not only is it hard to get to the school, but it's harder to get to the, your choice of career path. And I was, one of the questions I had was, would that really be legal if they are a member of the school? So when you say that there's a chance that it may not be, or at the very least it's frowned upon, that that answers the question for me right there.
Okay, so the, the motion in your packet is to approve the following policy for second reading as the defender. And I wanted to check with Amy if that is a correct one, because it has to go to the department.
Yes, but we wanted to vote on it today, submit it to the department as voted on by our special committee, and then if they have edits or comments, we can.
Okay, so we'll take the motion to approve it.
So moved second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the file?
I have a few comments. First comment is, I'm not convinced that it's gonna be easy for a student or their family to read, just because they don't know the climax or the type of language. But I found this document far clearer than the previous version. I only have a few comments on them. And I'm sure that the answers will be fairly simple, but I thought I'd bring them up only because it's so important. So on Section 3, we refer to the fact that there's gonna be seats allocated to towns that they're guaranteed to get for enrollment. But we don't mention the process by which it's gonna happen. We just say the admissions committee. Is it really the admissions committee that's going to do that?
Which, where are you, Jeff?
I'm on page 3 of the document, which is page 26 of the packet.
Section 4.
Section 4, I'm looking at to ensure annually, the admissions committee makes a recommendation to the school committee regarding the number of seats available for new students for the coming year and minimum number of seats reserved for each member town. So it sounds like the admissions committee is arbitrarily going to determine the minimum number of seats reserved for each member town. Is that what's gonna happen? Are we gonna have a written process by how those seats are allocated?
Can I come up with a sample mathematical model that could be used? We didn't want to, like, hammer it.
You don't want to codify, but perhaps, but is it gonna be the admissions committee that's gonna do that, or is it the school committee that's gonna come up with that policy?
Well, the school, I mean, I mean, I mean, that the school committee votes to approve it. Now.
If, if, regarding the number of seats, so. Are they gonna do it like every year, or are we going to eventually, oh, every year they may have a different number of seats?
Right, I would just, I would just have the flexibility based on this. We don't want a lot. That's what Amy told us.
I just wanted to make sure that that's what you really meant, and not have.
But it could be the same process every year.
You know, for example, they could come and say, here's the model we use, not just here's the number. Here's how we arrived at the number.
So my, my only comment there will be, in the event that we are full and that some member towns' students don't make it here, they may not like this vague language. They may say, I'm nervous that you're not gonna do this here. Do you have a policy on allocating those seats that we can see that we can agree this here as well? Do you think that we have to worry about that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I view this as, as being closely connected to the annual budget process. In the same way, we don't have a policy that says what our budget's only in ten years. But instead, we trust the school committee every year to make the best, the best decision.
But there are rules based on allocation of how much everybody owes us, pretty much. Assessments.
It might come up as a question with the department, because they're probably more used to, you know, seventy-five percent of the seats are going to town. That's not what we're proposing. We're proposing a minimum number of seats per town.
The process could be, could be explained to the school committee.
And what's the, what's the process if the town doesn't fill its minimum seats?
And the pool.
Then they go into the general.
Yeah, it's just to make sure there are seats. So for example, you know, there's not a tsunami of students from one town, and some of the smaller towns don't get to send any kids, but they're paying for the building. That wouldn't be right.
Uh, just a question really for George. On, uh, page 4 of this policy, page 27, it mentions that occasionally, if a student cannot get transportation to Minuteman, you go to their school and interview them. Yeah, I'm just curious, does that happen a lot?
Not a lot, but it happens, yeah.
It does happen.
A couple times a year, yeah.
That's interesting. Okay, the next comment. Uh, on, um, page 7 of the policy, page 30 of the packet, which is in Section 7. And again, this is fine the way it is. I just wanna make sure this is what you meant to say. So we talk about the number of absences that is, that is negative on the student's point system. And it does say, and I think the language may be a little bit clumsy, recognizing that students may have adverse circumstances, you know, medical reasons can take a student out for a month or two. The district will review not only the number of absences, but the document reason to their absences. So that's perfectly clear to me. The sentence may be a little bit clumsy, may want to, may, for example, medical, because that's the question that's gonna come up to people's. The primary reason why students are out for a lot of days when it's not a problem is because of medical, from what I've seen.
We didn't put in medical. We, we thought about medical, we thought about kids who, or their parents who stay home with their brothers or sisters when both parents are working. That happens to some people. We wanted to make this flexible, so that the school would be able to, you know, really examine the reasons why the kid had been absent and not just say, well, the record of absences is too many absences, and just shut them down. I think the Department of Education is probably gonna look favorably on us, be more flexible.
But that, I don't think that sentence includes, in some of the earlier iterations, we added that, because we felt that just the number didn't tell you enough about why.
Stuff happens.
So do you think it should say medical?
I, uh,
I don't think so, yeah.
If you're, if you're, the only thing, the reason you would wanna say that is if you really are gathering it to the students and the parents, then you may say, for example, long-term medical issue. But it's simpler not to say it, or to say that's really targeting those people.
We aren't, I mean, we don't want to encourage people to try to list up their point score, but we want to provide.
Yeah, they do all sorts of playing with parents, getting, calling up, saying, yes, it's an excuse to absence, that's a problem for me. Uh, finally, in Section 10, when you're talking about a, a point system for students to get to choose their program and how you distribute that, actually, the next last point, one other question. Uh, you don't tell how this point system works, which is fine. I'm just kinda comparing it to the other point system, which is very explicit. Whereas this one, you gave, you give points for the area, but you don't really see how the process works. And I'm wondering if there's gonna be, if some complaints back up on that.
What do you think, Alice?
When you send it to the department.
Well, we have a rubric. We could describe the exploratory rubric. That's how they get their points.
Yeah, we talked, we talked about it in the meeting.
Yeah, it's a formalized document. It's a grading system, actually. Every teacher fills it out for every student in their exploratory. And then when they go to pick their first choice, their grade per what have you would be their points. So it's a, it's a rubric that's standardized, so we could describe it a little bit if needed, but also if it's asked for, it's very easily.
As you said, from the point of view of a reader who is not involved in this every day, it just raises the question why one rubric is in there very clearly. This one, which is also important, isn't. Now, I don't care whether you have it there or not. I can say, oh, they have a rubric, I'm all set. I'm just wondering what the Department of Ed is gonna say about that. Maybe it's standard to do it this way, or maybe it's standard to include the rubric. I have no idea. I'm just bringing up the point.
We talked a little bit about not putting it in, just in case we wanted to.
Keep it flexible.
Keep it flexible, yeah.
If they want it, they'll undoubtedly acquire.
And we can put it in.
And my last question, this is, was, so we admit all member town students first, regardless of their point score. Is that correct? No, so how did, what, how does that, how does that work?
There's wording in there that talks about a minimum cut score, so.
A minimum cut score. I must have missed that when I read it. So it's a minimum cut score. So we, we take in all the in-district students first until that cut score. Is that correct? And then after that cut score, we go to the non-resident students, mostly the time. Is that correct?
We have spaces.
We have spaces.
It's possible that the, if the total size is 180 and, and member applicants fill up even higher than the cut score.
And it has to do with the timelines as well. There's two ways.
We do have a cut score.
It's identified every year.
Right, it's not fixed.
And it's talked about in here?
Yeah.
It is mentioned in here.
It's mentioned in there that it's a identified cut score is done every year.
Okay, all set.
Thank you.
Uh, just a, just a thing, a little question. What, what is the recent experience of the number of, the percentage of students who get their first choice program after a rubric?
It's extremely high. A hundred percent of the students this past year got either their first or second, but the number that had to go with their second, I, I think it was like single-digit students. That got their second choice, and still got their first.
Have any left if they didn't get their, their first, second, or whatever choice that any students decided, why did I back them up in school?
Not because of that, no.
I mean, I mean, this year's strong point class is relatively small. I mean, it'll be curious to see what happens this joint work.
And thank all the people working on this policy. I know how challenging this particular policy is to put together. I really do know. I appreciate the work put into it.
It's an interesting puzzle.
Alice, Alice really, you're a very good person. Yes, Alice, you know, leading the effort of Jim and Dave as well. And Amy, yes. Any, any other comments? Are you ready to vote? I think we've had a motion, right? All in favor? Any opposed, abstentions? Dave? Yes, thank you. It was like. Secretary's report, Dave. September minutes.
The minutes that we'd like you to approve tonight are the ones that were in the, at the, the packet you received in your house, not the ones at home. Not the ones that, that were online at first crack, so I didn't, I know it was a short term, I'm trying to, did we receive any comments, anyone? Did anyone, anyone comment or forward?
I moved the minutes as.
I just, I, I didn't see the, the last minutes, but it had Carolyn Flood voting during executive session.
Oh, I think I changed, I changed that.
Okay, but Dave, you think you already caught?
Yeah, but I, I think I caught it. The ones that went out, they were in the packet.
I don't recall that one. I, I will check.
One of them said on Monday.
It had Flood? Well, we'll change that. I found another place when I changed it. I must have missed that.
I think it was in here.
Yeah, it's changed. It's changed in the.
Yes, I see.
In the packet.
Oh, the one?
The one that was.
The one you got tonight?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I still moved the minutes out.
Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed, abstentions? One abstention. Just one, right?
That was the only one that went down here.
Okay. So we need a motion to move into executive session, kind of a long motion. Dave, could you make the motion?
I move that we enter into executive session as follows. One, to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property with the chair of players at an open meeting. They have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And two, pursuant to purpose three, MGL chapter 38, section 21A, part three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Minuteman Faculty Association. At an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school group and the chair of some of the players.
And the third one.
Three, pursuant to MGL, uh, chapter 38, section, uh, yeah, chapter 21A7, to comply with or act under authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, specifically MGL. MGL, chapter 38, section 22F and G, F, sections F and G, with regard to review, approval, and/or consideration of nondisclosure of executive session minutes. sections F and G, with regard to review, approval, and/or consideration of non-disclosure of executive session minutes for, for meetings held between January first, two thousand twelve, and December third, first, two thousand thirteen, and/or related appointment of one or more dozen needs to review such minutes. MGL, chapter thirty-eight, review under research section, section minutes for meetings held between January first, two thousand twelve, and December thirtieth, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
And who stays?
Excuse me?
And who stays?
Yes, and, um,
Not to return.
Kevin, Julia, Bob, Amy, it all.
Not to return.
George and Ford.
And not to return. And I'll read second. Um, Ashley, Jennifer, you want to start?
Yep, we're going to take a turn out.
Oh, let's just do the vote and then we'll take a break.
Line caster, yes.
Arlington, yes.
Tucker, yes.
Acton, yes.
Needham, yes.
Don't want, yes. Dover, yes.
Okay, let's take a little time to turn off the recording equipment, pass out materials.
I'm going to unplug it.
Take a little bio.